Maisie McCullough, I am the president of NJHS here at Bolivar. And one thing we have done is we have held an induction ceremony where we inducted new NJHS members and the officers, they gave speeches.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Smith, I'm the secretary of NJHS.
I'm Jalen Beach, I'm a teacher.
I'm Julia Wheeler, I help design the light heart sign.
I'm Isaac Scott, and I help train the bells at Walmart for Salvation Army.
I'm so told, and another thing NJHS did is we decorated the middle school lobby through toys and hats.
Hi, I'm Sophia Garber.
Hi, I'm Matt Rich, I would've been president if I ran, but I didn't. Do you, Maisie?
Hi, I'm Kayla Ballard, I'm the parentarian for NJHS. One thing we did for NJHS was earlier this week, we made Christmas cards for the nation home.
Hi, I'm Amy.
I'm Val Van Grenden, and we have to just create it.
I have a little wish.
Alright, and you guys are going to do this in the title of the regents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, oh, okay, good picture.
That's right.
Try to get a panoramic.
That's right. One, two, three. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, have a good day.
Great job, everybody.
Excellent crowd this evening, guys, but we are going to let Mr. Quater do his admin report right now, so we can move on to other things.
Did you want to do the?
The admin at first?
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Whatever you like.
Yep.
At weight here, there are millions of people. And the best is yours.
I love Brady Cart- Cartile. This is in the video.
You always have to be happy. No, you don't always have to be happy.
Character Strong is a program that we do schoolwide, so six times in each grade. Every Character Strong lesson starts with a quote, and then we usually build on that quote, and we talk about what it means to them, and how it relates to their lives.
And then after the quote, then they go into a kind of a group collaboration kind of thing. There might be a meme up, and they have to decide which meme looks like them, or how they feel, or maybe they'll call a story about a picture real quick, quick little disclaimer, and then we go into the lessons.
And you get advice to Kaylin and advice to Isabel. Now, let's take a look at what Kaylin is dealing with.
We basically just learned about good life lessons, about like, being kind, and making good friendships, healthy relationships, and stuff like that.
Sometimes it's about like kindness, being friendship, and all those sorts of things. And so it's just like, but right now what we're doing is understanding others. I learn more about other students, and sometimes like I don't know about me.
People choose their emotions. Please strongly agree. Do you agree, disagree, or strongly disagree?
We connect with others by doing these like group projects, or like group activities, so you get to know like a small group of people at a time.
And sometimes it's just fun to hear what they like, because it's, you know, like, I sometimes, like I'm used to my opinions, or I'm used to them, and then when I hear other people, it's kind of interesting to sometimes hear them.
One of the things that Character Strong does is, in the lesson, it says, now your teacher's going to tell you about how this happened, or how she or he would react to this. So not only do they have to do it, but they see the teachers modeling it.
That was the one where we looked back to and talked about who we could notice things about. Three new things about someone that might be going through something.
The character dare, once a week, the program gears the kids to take something from the lesson and go out into the world and practice it.
It's like a challenge to go like make someone's day, or do a compliment somebody else, or just like a dare that you can do after a lesson.
The one that we have right now is to find out three new things about someone, seeing them come back and tell me about talking to somebody about the character dare, or the things that they learned, or even it just brings their attention and makes them notice those things that they never noticed before.
Well, if you like warrior emotions, don't they just leave you like a robot?
While they may not admit it, I really do think they enjoy these lessons, and I think it helps them to see the connections that they all have with each other, and how similar their lives are, but it also exposes them to the differences that they have.
I love getting to share what we do with all, with everyone, and getting to just been tied with everyone, and getting to understand what people go through, because like on the outside, we think that everybody's just one specific person, or we know everything about them, but then Character Strong really dives down into the depths of people, and you can actually understand, and maybe relate to people.
I think it's super important, because it's giving them those tools. It's teaching them, okay, what are my values? And so if they put those things in their toolbox, and they have them now, they're able to use them later, when they're in high school, when they're in college, when they're married and grown up.
We want to like gain your courage, or whatever, inside of like, you know, just getting to know each other, having a good time, being more comfortable at school.
They're all just trying to figure themselves out, each other out, and this just kind of is a nice little path to walk on through that process.
Yeah, so, we're super excited about that program. I've had that, I've been watching that program for a while now, and I'm very excited to implement that this year, and I'm also really excited that high school also does that, so we're aligned six twelve. And so, you know, the, when they, our students get to high school, you know, it's, it's not a, a change of, of a curriculum or implementation, they, they understand the, how the lessons flow, and then how to connect with each other, and, and also those character dares are really fun, and really to see. After that week, they have a character dare, they come back and they reflect on it, they talk to their peers about it, talk to the teacher about it, so it's a really neat piece. So, super excited about it. Any questions about Character Strong? Um, so for my board report, just kind of want to highlight, wrestling's wrapping up, tonight's their last night of wrestling. They've had a really successful season. They had their Ozark Conference meet last weekend in Springfield, and out of fifteen middle schools, they placed fourth. And that was, they were just a few points away from being first, second, or third, like they did, they showed out really, really well. Then I want to highlight, on, on the board report, we had a pep assembly, or winter, or winter pep assembly, and typically that's just girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and wrestling, and Stu Coe had a great idea of, we have so many kids involved in things, let's recognize everyone that's involved this winter. So, we did girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and wrestling, but we also recognized band, and choir, and everyone in musical. So it's really neat to see that inclusiveness for everyone that's doing something in BMS this winter, so, I don't know, super neat. And then, I, I just want to highlight as well, really excited about how our students are giving back in NJHS. They talked about when they were ringing the bell for Salvation Army, Student Council did that as well, they're, they've been doing a penny war, which is they're raising money, they've raised almost two hundred dollars for, instead of doing a food drive, they're just going to give our food pantry cash. So they did a penny war, and that's been really fun. So just excited to see just how our students are giving back to the community as well, so, good stuff. Any questions? Alright, thank you guys.
Alright, please. Now we will check our agenda accommodations. Oh, I have these right here, sorry. I have to see them. Okay, um, we have just a few commendations, I'll go ahead and read those for this month. Congratulations to Owen Cornell for being selected first chair percussion in the Missouri All-State Orchestra. Eileen Siegfried for honorable mention bass player net. And to Sharon Bryant for performing in triumph for the All-State Band. Does anybody have anything else that they want to add? Commissions this month?
I would, I'm going to recognize our maintenance staff, they have, they've been really doing a lot. We installed the sidewalk from BIS down the bus lane, and we worked with the city on that. They've also helped coordinate some of the repair work at the high school with the roof, a broken water line right before Thanksgiving break. They're currently doing some, planning for additions at the hoops building, building some walls. They installed the heaters. We, we just really have a great maintenance and custodial staff that just continue to get the next day ready for, for the next round of events, and, and, you know, they were here over the weekend for the speech and debate, and then Sunday events, and so it's, they've done a great job.
Alright, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that was presented?
So do.
Would you say? So anything you can read that list for everybody? Good. Alright, does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Haswell, we're going to have to employ.
We have two classified recommendations, Jessica Evans for BIS secretary, Amanda Randall, paraprofessional, and then I'll also have a extra duty stipend following your action.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the, approve the employment for classified?
Close.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. We have a special Olympics stipend, one of those was left vacant, and we're recommending D. Barber for that particular position, because it's a special Olympics program.
Do I have any questions about that? Alright, I have a motion to approve employment for extra duty assignment for D. Barber for special Olympics. Stop it.
It's a seven hundred dollar stipend, it's a set amount.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Substitute list?
Uh, we have your substitute list there for a variety of programs, but check those over, and then we recommend those for approval.
I have a motion to approve this substitute list as well. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's Dr. Walt.
Yes, I submitted an assessment plan, we've updated those with the help of building principals and coaches, and it really just details the assessments we use throughout the year, for fall semester, spring semester, that includes glossary, and do you have any questions about those assessments? There aren't a lot of assessments, we, we do a lot of assessments, a lot of screeners, any screener that we give throughout the district, or any assessment is included. And if you ever have any questions about those, at the beginning, it should give you a little brief description, but if you might have further questions, just ask us, and we'll share them. Okay. Alright, everybody has our administrative reports? Okay, Mr. Pitts?
Yes. Good evening, I have just a few items to bring to your attention. Yesterday, we submitted through the Missouri Department of Public Safety a grant to help us with our cybersecurity. We are eligible to receive up to two hundred thousand dollars for this grant with a ten percent match, and it's going to help us with personnel subscriptions and equipment if we are awarded the grant, we are hopeful. One of the initiatives of this grant is for us to initiate a cyber response plan, this is something we're going to do right after the first of the year. We have a written, we will have a written plan in place, using the grant as sort of a guide map, and we'll have five pillars, identify, protect, detect, respond, and recover. This is something we need to have in place for a lot of reasons, and we are going to make it a priority to have this cybersecurity plan, written documents in place, very soon after the first of the year. On the subsequent grants, we are working on several grants, they are in various stages, and we're anxious to hear back from our ARPA grant, and that could happen any day. We're also working on cameras in doors, we have spots that need to be addressed, it's much like the grants, they are in various stages, and the timing challenges we're having are all related to equipment, trying to get the equipment here to install the final round of cameras in doors. This one isn't as glamorous, but it's very important, it has to do with our network infrastructure, and it's switches, network switches. Many of our switches have reached end of life, and we have to replace them. I was astonished how much a group of switches costs. And we're working closely with our E-Rate grant, and so we are responsible for a fifth of the cost, the first round came in at over four hundred thousand, so that led us to really study, and what we could do better, so we went to all of the buildings, and were able to combine the switches, because we are so much wireless now, we don't need those cords snaked in from the terminals to the switch, and we cut that in half. And so we, the total cost is going to be, for the whole project, is going to be just a little bit north of two hundred thousand, and so our responsibility will be forty thousand. I thought that was a, a pretty big win for us. I'm also happy to report that this week, because of the EFC grant that we've talked about for many months, we had three hundred Chromebooks delivered, they're downstairs right now with no match, and the value of the Chromebooks is about a hundred thousand. We are going to use virtually all of them for next year's incoming class, and that will give us some good budget relief. Finally, we had almost sixty new access points delivered. Access points are the white little square things that are in ceilings and halls around the district, they connect our wireless devices to the network, and we had about, just a little bit south of sixty of those delivered, and we plan to install them over the Christmas break, and maybe a, a few of them after the first of the year. That concludes my report, very happy to take your questions.
Mike, could you clarify, so, a couple of the camera issues that we were working on, so you kind of have like, we're fixing some areas, we're adding some cameras, so, you know, we have the new tennis courts and the concession stand issues, are we getting that area covered?
Yes, we are, it'll be well covered. I know that I was asked, two or three board meetings ago, what about the, what about the athletic fields? We're putting three sixties around the high school concession stand to cover the parking lot, the concession stand itself, and the athletic fields. There are some cameras on the high school that are near end of life, and they've kind of outpaced the software, so we're getting quads and rearranging the high school to get even better coverage than we have. So we're very, very happy about where that's headed, just takes a while to get the parts.
We also had some intercom issues at the primary, we've been working with Dr. Tennyson on that, how's that going?
Slower than I would like. Just today, we got the outdoor speaker fixed, and we have to order parts for the classroom. I thought we were a little farther along in that project, but it's, it's, it's moving ahead.
Okay.
Look, who sees the feed after those cameras? I mean, does it go to your phone, does it go to Jason's phone?
The feed from the cameras?
Right.
I know we have, we have access to it, Jason, do you see that, and, and a key administrator at the building has access. We have access to all of them, and they have access to their.
All have those, the SROs have access to those as well, and then.
Actually, they have their mobile device, they don't have to be able to.
Yeah, I think they can log in now to their mobile device, can, not yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so I know we went to the new platform, that was supposed to be the options that we could be able to log in, is that something that we just can't?
That's what I, I thought we were working toward that.
Okay.
So if something happens overnight, or over the weekend? Just waiting to check the video.
No, it doesn't like notify us that something happened, it's not like a ring, doorbell, or anything, so we, but we have, the good thing is, is we have activities just about every day, so it's, it's one of those things where we find out, but no one is like monitoring our cameras twenty-four seven. Unless Dr. Garber wants to.
Exciting times as we wrap up the semester at BIS. One of the things that I mentioned last month's board report that has been fun, seeing a lot more activity around the building after school, we have chess club going on, but we also have Coach Cole started up an activity club, which we opened up just to fifth graders, and within one day, we had forty fifth graders that were signed up and ready to come. So he's doing athletic skill building, but also character lessons with them, and he's going to expand that the two days a week come semester too, so we might be able to open up some more spots, but I've enjoyed seeing that, and I put in the board report, Megan Ash and Shaila Jones have started doing regular after school gatherings for some special education students and their families, so the families actually can get to come, build some relationships there, I read the poll, I read the rest the other night, and that's, it was a ton of fun. So I just like seeing our building getting used by our students after school, that's, I like seeing that traffic, that's good. I did want to mention Sarah Rose is one of our teachers in the fourth grade, who's just recently stepped on to, into the letters training, which I've mentioned a couple of our teachers early on, that's some literacy based training that gives, there's more tools in our toolbox as far as science and reading, so we're excited about that, and that's, again, grant funded stuff, so I'm excited that it's coming to us at no cost. We have our Christmas assembly tomorrow, so that'll be fun, we'll be having some games and some celebrations, one of the things we'll be celebrating are our liberator leaders for second quarter. Second quarter, our focus is, first quarter was on lead, or sorry, learning, second quarter's on growing, so we're going to be talking about, you know, recognizing kids that have shown that they've become a better friend, they've become a better problem solver, they've grown, you know, socially, emotionally, so, excited to recognize those students tomorrow. And then, my favorite thing about December is that, once we start taking the second eye rating diagnostic, kids are unnoticed, and if they improve, they need to come to my office and tell me, so I have been bombed with visitors, and I love that, sometimes a few, you know, trickle of kids, sometimes a whole class of kids shows up. That's really the best part of my job, is to celebrate with kids, and, you know, it's, I think the thing I love most about that is, is kids being conscious of their own progress. It's one thing for me to know about, it's one thing for a teacher to understand that kids are making progress, but the real, you know, you flip the switch when the kid knows, I'm making progress, I'm learning, I'm growing, so that's just a ton of fun, and so celebrating that's been awesome. I think that's all we have, we're just wrapping it up, any questions?
Is the assembly where we can spread eggs at all? Soon.
You will, you will be first to know. I, I did mention on there, Navy Daughter Dance has gotten on the calendar, so that's an exciting event, and I make sure to save the date, we'd love to have you.
Not all of us.
That's true, that's true.
Just pointing that out. Thank you. Mr. Blair?
Before I go through this, I might kind of clarify your question, but Mike, just so you know, with the cameras, one, the cameras, they've installed so much better than what we had, night and day, and I don't know if you've seen images, or seen unbelievable difference, but both the assistant principals have those running in there, soaked up the TVs where they're running, and can monitor. I have access to it at any time from my computer that I want, as does Scott, so, they're accessible, and as far as the mobile, that's something we're, we're working with now, but really a nice system, but I feel like Mike's working toward getting a hundred percent complete, and I don't know, eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five percent there, but it's, it's really good, a vast, a vast improvement on what was there. Just a few things not kind of included here, I guess I will touch on one, the, when I wrote this, the speech and debate event that we hosted here had not yet happened, that went fairly well. We had a lot of schools, I think last count thirty-two different schools, about eight or nine hundred kids from those schools over a two-day event. One of the cool things, because we have teachers from literally every building, and a lot of them assisting that, because it just requires so many judges to do those things, so, so a very cool deal, that we're very appreciative for all the help that we got across all the buildings. Couple things just to mention, we are in the middle of finals, today was day one review, we'll give our first set of finals tomorrow, Monday will be the second day of review, and then the second set of finals on Tuesday, so that's kind of where we're at there. Aside from some of the stuff I mentioned, I failed to mention, our interact club at the high school has just concluded a clothing drive, also got a Toys for Tots drive going, we got a lot of organizations that do civic things that I've given credit for, but don't know if I've mentioned them, and then also, talking about reading, reading's a little bit one of my passions, mainly because that's my wife's huge passion, so it's mine whether I want it to be or not. But we've seen good results from the reading program that we've had at school, at the high school, and I know TC, that's something that's fairly near and dear to her as well, but seeing those kids graduate out of that, which is the whole point, we all want to keep them there all year, we, we want to see those kids progressing, and TC, if you know the number, if I'm wrong, I believe, did I try to get that, I believe, what?
Twelve, she said twelve.
Perfect, that's exactly what I was going to say, I believe we have twelve students that will be graduating out of that and going on to other things, which means we've got them back on a grade level, which is where we need to be, because at, at least, I love it, when you talk about reading, because it's so critical to success for everything, so, I was really glad to hear when I came over that, I wish I could take credit for some of that, but that was well in place before I got over here, but, super important, and doing a really good job, I feel like those, those people working with that at the high school, so. So I've got, any questions, comments? Awesome, thanks.
Mr. Fazetti?
Well, that's going around, that's just pretty much a summary of what's coming out for the holiday tournaments for high school basketball, boys and girls, and for wrestling. And then down the bottom is something I'll talk about just a little bit. A lot of great things going on right now, I mean, we are packed to the good, almost every single night with activities. Tonight, we got wrestling going on at the middle school, we got seventh grade basketball, we're working on the media eighth grade basketball at the Oxtreme, the girls are playing varsity basketball, JV and varsity in the big gym, and then we've got play going on, middle school play, so, it's just, it's crazy, and December seems to be that way, so, but a little break in there will be kind of nice, but at the same time, as you see, we've got things going on with the tournaments as well. Some things that happened since the last board meeting, we had, our girls went to fair play, won that tournament, the boys got second at Willard, we had our home wrestling tournament, on Friday night, we had varsity girls and JV boys, I had quite a few teams involved with that, the next day, we had the varsity boys. I just want to point out that our girls got their first ever trophy at that tournament, and second place, so, very cool. And then, we had first home girls basketball on Tuesday night, Stockton, they're playing Smith and Cotton tonight, and then the boys start tomorrow in the public. On the bottom of that sheet there, is just something that I want to, I'll talk more about it in next month, if that's okay with you guys, but I just want to give you the link to going to, it's called 3D Coaching, it's a program I'm implementing with our coaches later in the semester, next semester, excuse me, and what it really does is you're looking at, all coaches can coach in three levels if they choose to, and I want to help them get to that third level. The first dimension is the fundamentals, doing things, just X's and O's, and, and that's what all the coaches do, they all know that part. The second dimension is working with the mind and the body, and getting those kids to believe that they can do things that maybe they don't believe that they can do. And that third dimension is capturing your heart, letting them know you care about them, you love them, you want to work with them, and just giving those kids to all be part of one big thing, so, I can go into more detail on that next month, we'll be, we'll spend some time on that with you, and it's a program that I've used at my last school, and I'm a huge fan of it, and I think it makes a big difference. I went through the program myself before I started working with coaches, and honestly, I felt like I even talked to my son differently, based on some of the things that I learned in there, so, there's a video on that, that homepage that you can look at, kind of talks about the program as a whole, and like I said, that I can use some more examples of some things the next one. Any questions that you guys have?
I think so.
Okay.
So, one team doing after practice at SVU?
Yes. Yes, yes, that's been going well. They've actually, they are offering us more days than we thought we were going to have over break. That's good. All right, appreciate you guys' support.
All right, I just need to give two quick updates. First one's on our counseling services. Dr. Wall and I were able to have a Zoom meeting with the National Center for Rural School Mental Health, and they are inviting schools to participate in a study that focuses on improving the capacity of schools to support students' emotional and behavioral wellbeing. So they would provide different tools to assist and help us assess student needs, and then we will be able to receive different student data reports, and then have some consultation with them, and then they provide resources on how to help meet those needs based on the assessment results. So we also have the Zoom call set up with our counselors in January, and it's be a good opportunity for them to kind of learn about the program, ask questions that they have, and it seems like another good tool that we can add to help meet our students' mental health needs. So we're excited about exploring that. And then just a safety update as well. Recently, we've been working on entering our district EOP into the Center for Educational Safety's online tool, which they call the MO EOP. It's a web-based application that was developed by NSVA, embedded by multiple school district safety personnel. It assists schools with their emergency planning, creating, storing, and then also sharing those plans with school staff and first responders. It also has an app that you can access all the information in, so it's going to be a good, good resource for us. We're almost done with the district plan, we're just going to finish putting in a few more details, some contact information, uploading to our MOU, some things like that, and so we should have that done next week. And then the next step after Christmas break will be our assistant principals working on getting the building information entered. So the tool kind of walks you through the process, but I've also been in communication with CES, and they are willing to set a Zoom call up with us to kind of walk through and just help make sure we understand the tool, we get all the training we need, answer questions that we have, so they've been, they've been very supportive in the process. And also, we've been working on getting another Safety Alliance meeting set up in the spring, so we'll start that process. Just a good, a good meeting that gathers multiple stakeholders together, first responders, talk about safety items, and then just kind of go through some scenario-based situations and kind of how we respond to that. So still some work to do, but we're making good progress on that, so hopefully is kind of where we are in that process. Any questions about either of those?
I remember that was the program that you have to be in.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like Missouri University, I think the University of Montana, and I think Virginia University are all kind of partnering together with this. And so it, it's pretty neat. It was, it was a short presentation that she gave with us, but we've set up a longer one with the counselors, like a full hour. So they're going to go through the full tool with them, show exactly what it entails, the reports that come through, then how you use that. And then that, they're like, you know, it's great that you get all this data, but then we really also try to come alongside and say, okay, what do you do about that? So then, you know, we have consultations, we provide resources, and we try to help you as you support your students.
So how long will it be before we know if we're a controlled group?
We would, yeah, we, so we would need to decide, like, we have through this spring, so we're meeting with them in January, and then it would be for next school year, next fall, so we have a little bit of time this spring.
And then it'd be right before that we would know whether we're the controlled group.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, I think it's a two-year study initially, is that right?
But my understanding is we continue to use the resources that we have, and the study we can continue to utilize beyond just the research.
And they give, you can participate as a district, you can participate by building, and then they give some funds at the end that you can use for whatever you want, you know, celebration or different things, but they also then offer resources, they encourage you to use those funds to kind of purchase words, so.
Dr. Garber, I know that I've ever been to that school safety specialist academy, NSVA does, and when the next one might be in the spring, do you know anything about that?
Yes, so we looked at that, and actually, we just met this week, and we're going over some of that this past week. So the next one is in Jefferson City, it's the spring, the end of February, beginning of March. So I've sent that information, they have that, and then we'll look at. We still need to go through and kind of decide if we're going to have some individuals or a team register for that, but yeah, it's, it's the spring.
I wonder if it ties into this a bit, in the February, the beginning of March. I watched a webinar on threat assessments, and there's a two-day workshop that NSVA is coordinating, some folks down from Cape Girardeau, I think are the people that are speakers, but it's like two full days about behavioral threat assessment and that sort. And it's, I have the dates written down, so it's like March sixty-seventh maybe, or something like that. That might be something to put on your radar as well.
I think, I think this, I think this is right before that.
Okay.
But I have to double check the dates.
Okay. Thank you for all the work that you're doing.
We've got a good team, it's taken a team effort, so.
Shelley?
Okay, so update on the littles. Christmas is always probably the most exciting in our building, and I think this year we all took it one step further, decorated the halls. So come see us or look at the Facebook page, because the teacher really went overboard, and it was so cute listening to the kids, because they were in awe, one little voice said it just perfectly, he's like, "Thank you for doing this, this makes me so happy." It was really cute. In our building, one of the big things that we've done over the last, probably since Thanksgiving, is screenings. We did our math screening in end of March, first of April, and we captured all but forty of the kids that are currently enrolled. So we went back and did those screenings. And I use a lot of that data kind of our next semester, spring fold into the next part of our curriculum writing, finished up with the math. Now we're getting ready to start with literacy. And just a quick look through the other day, out of the forty that we screened, and keep in mind that these kids have been in school for two or three months, except the seventieth percentile and below, we had eighty-three percent in that range. So for me, that's a concern, we don't want, language is a huge piece of success in school, and if eighty-three percent of our kids are seventy percent down below, we know they're going to struggle once they get into the primary. What I observe around the building is that flexibility of language, and I think primary is seeing the same thing. They're seeing in second grade, that phonemic awareness piece isn't, isn't there, and I think that's part of what we're seeing with the language. So just diving into that, we're adding a piece in the preschool to make sure that we support all the way up through second grade with that phonemic awareness. So that'll be the big thing that we'll start tackling that with them. I did want to say that the, thank you for the gift certificates, the ham was well received in the building, they were excited, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Since I last talked to you, I was able to run over for our kindergarten family night, Lord Express is happening, passed several people in the hallway, but it was jam-packed. Mrs. Hurt has been texting me, it did just in, were three hundred and ninety-one people were there, just, we just had shy of two hundred kindergartners, so of course lots of families were there, lots of matching pajamas everywhere. Couldn't get to Santa because the line was so long, and the year was from Winkler from the high school, because it was coordinated with the teaching pathway students, they had wrapped books that Santa gave them, it was wall-to-wall people. As that, Mrs. Hurt said, wondering, two kids were crying because they didn't want to leave, like lots of tears, they didn't want to leave. And huge thanks to you guys for Career Ladder, we had more than doubled the staff, normally we only have our kindergarten teachers there, but lots and lots of teachers volunteered, and we needed every one of them this evening, it was fabulous, so thanks for that. And I left out of our board report share of Christmas, our student council decided they wanted to do a hat drive, we raised over six hundred dollars, and they only bring quarters, so I feel like that's fantastic for our students to do. And then as a staff, on our last professional learning day, we really started looking at, what is VPS all about? Why do we exist? And so I should have put this in the board report, I'll put it in January's, but we've reworked, what is our mission and vision at VPS? What are we about? We've kind of gone in line with what's happened at the district level. We had some teachers put these images together, so I'll be sure and include it, but it's really going to help drive, how do we make decisions at the primary school, what are we really about for our students? And so it incorporated all the things that it should, and it said it in a way better way than what Mrs. Hurt or myself could have ever come up with, was teachers, and paras, and secretaries, and even we were trying to talk to custodians, what do you think? So we got everyone's input, and we, it would show up, happens to happen at the primary school.
Thank you. Mr. Heinz?
A little dip. Lots of good things happening everywhere. One of the things that I certainly was going to highlight was just the way that students are giving back, and we're seeing that in all the buildings in a lot of different ways, so that's, I thought maybe I'd be unique in that commentary tonight, but they're all doing, and that's actually a better thing. So we have lots of things going on, we're closing up the semester, we know how, we know how that is. Everybody's working hard, they're ready for the break, but they're also excited about what's going to be coming in the things next semester, so. As we close out the semester, we've had some, some great things, and just even today, we had a life skills class that's taught by Leslie Lobdell at the middle school, they went out to community outreach ministries, they stocked shelves, they put price tags on foods, they stocked freezers. We had BHS, it was either a week or two ago, that life skills class, the Ring Bells for Salvation Army. There's a lot of education that's going on, not just in the classroom, but outside the classroom, learning how to give back, learning about what it takes to, to put effort into something else that's not always directly related to schoolwork. And that's going to help them as they go through what they want to go through, reaching their, their goals, their dreams, pushing for those things. So it's just exciting to see that they're, they're willing to take the time to do that. We've got a few seniors getting ready next semester for job placements during the spring semester as part of their job prep class. They'll go out and do something with the communities, some job shadowing experiences, something that they can also work on a resume and get that experience. So it's a really good thing. We've got monthly meetings with our pre-eds, person pre-eds is pre-employment transition skills, so they're coming to the high school each month and working with those students who are in that category of preparing for moving beyond high school. It starts at age sixteen, so you know, you're talking sophomores, juniors, seniors, it's not just those seniors who are getting ready to graduate, it starts a lot earlier than that, with, with them preparing for what they want to do on the post-secondary level, whether it's career stuff, whether it's college, whether it's some type of training, even the military side, all those things come into play. To add what Andy Love talked about with Shaila Jones and Megan Ash, what they're doing on their family night each month, it's also an opportunity for parents to reach out to those teachers and learn about what, what those services look like at intermediate school. It could be for those, those students who are third graders, they're new to the intermediate school, but also they can reach out as their, their fifth graders are getting ready to move up to middle school. What's that going to look like for my student? What do we need to prepare for? Who do we need to talk to? What's that, just what's that going to look like overall? So it's, it's a great opportunity for kids to have those activities and, and socialize and do things, but it's an opportunity for parents too, to connect with those teachers and get a jump on what's going to be happening as those students prepare for the next thing, the next grade level. For some of them, the next, next grade level is in a different building, and that's going to look a lot different for them, so. A lot of great things happening, we're waiting on our driving simulator to, to just get in order at the high school, and that's going to be used in a variety of ways, so it's, it's been a good semester. A lot of great things that we can be proud of, that we can celebrate, and just continue to build off of. Any questions?
Thank you. Chelsea, are you busy with us now or later?
She's got two coming up, so.
Then Dr. Wall?
Okay, just quickly, shout out to Mike Pitts, have a funny story about testing, I think I'm going to tell him that story, Mike. Of course, the biggie with Mike was like, testing has got to go well. If I do one thing right this year, when the EOCs open up and that testing platform hits, students need to be able to get in and do their stuff. And so he has told me that several times this year. So Monday morning rolls around, Darren Anken's getting ready to start over at Bridges, and I get a quick frantic phone call from Jennifer Earl, it's like, oh my goodness, we can't get in, blah blah, I'm like, oh. So what do I immediately do? I'm like, Mike, Mike, all systems down, we need help, we can't get in this morning. I hadn't set the testing window, so it was on TC. Took me about thirty seconds to set that window, we were up and running, but I have to say, Mike, everything went well the minute we got into that system. He had us up and running, I felt so silly, because I was like, Mike! It's like, oh, I own that, it's me, I didn't set the window. Anyway, I won't make that mistake again. Mike was very gracious, though, thank you. But they, they did a great job and had us up and running. Testing's almost finished, we're just finishing up with some, we did our last class of government today, so finishing up with some makeups, and hopefully we'll have those done by Friday. We are in December cycle of tier monitoring, that's already been submitted. Jason and I have been talking to you about that, and that's a year-long process, but it's going well, it's going very well. We're getting ready to look at a curriculum audit with the instructional coaches, and we may visit with building principals, but what we really want to do is make sure, we've got a lot of encore classes at the middle and high school, I want to make sure everything's written in current. We've been writing core areas, we've worked on some encore areas this summer, so just really making sure all I's are dotted and T's are crossed as we move into curriculum writing this summer, and hopefully some professional development days this spring. So that's, we're just wanting to really shore that up. And last but not least, Senate Bill six eighty-one is here, it's something that we're addressing. It includes reading success plans at the primary and intermediate school, we're working through that process. With principals, they've been fantastic, that'll be spring semester work, just making sure that those students have plans in place, that we're doing a good job of communicating our processes with families, and giving them opportunities to do, to do some take-home reading activities with them as well. So there's a lot involved in that, and we'll keep you updated as we work through that this spring.
Yeah, just a couple of things, I sent you some information about some legislation on open enrollment. So that conversation will be ongoing, the session starts in January, and so we'll bring that to your attention. The Polk County School Districts, our super dittens are kind of having a general conversation about what that looks like as far as the, our neighbors and us included. So we will probably be hosting our Polk County School Districts first of the year, just to have a general conversation, bring some of that discussion back to you, and then most all of the Polk County School Districts are meeting with their boards in January. So I think Fair Play is actually discussing it this month, but it looks like the rest of them will be discussing it in January. We have had our calendar committee, meetings are going on, we've had some drafts out, we had a meeting yesterday. We got revisions back out today, so they will get that, you all have those revisions for the calendar committee. That'll go out to all staff tomorrow in regard of just checking numbers. I did get some good feedback on, one of the things was that there's sometimes a lot of confusion about what a snow day is and building in snow days versus the old calendar, and, you know, when I was in school, we had, you know, five days built in or whatever. So when we reviewed that yesterday, there was some good clarification, which is, there's, you have to have X number of hours built in, and if you, if you build in the maximum amount, then a snow day is a snow day. So last year, we had a lot of challenges trying to meet just the minimum hourly requirements, because only some of our buildings had not included enough hours, but in, in the district, our, our schedule wasn't correct either. That, that has been corrected in this calendar, so a snow day is a snow day. There's, there's not a need for us to start worrying about, well, when are we going to make that up, or what's the makeup day? So there's a, there's a balance to that, one is it's built in, but two, even if we were to miss ten days, that's ten days that, you know, our students don't get instruction that are considered snow days. But I think we're going to include some of that in the district update tomorrow, just to allow everybody to understand what that means when we have the built-in time that the legislation now provides us.
Any questions? Moving on to board governance.
I don't have a lot.
I am going to, maybe to our horn right now, and just say that Career Ladder has also, was really good for the speech and debate tournament, because I heard one of his parents, those speech and debate students, saying that they had more judges this year than what they typically ever had, even close to have, because it's elder career ladder time, and so, again, all those teachers, so, yeah. That's, you know, another good benefit of that. Paula and I have been working with Dr. Garber. Paula and I have been working with Dr. Garber on school safety stuff, for lack of a better word. We're going to have a plan. We're going to meet again in January. And does anyone else have anything they want to add?
I'd just add that you're, really the board's doing a great job of representing the board at each of the meetings, whether they be the information meetings, calendar meetings.
Thank you.
We've, we've been involved in you as part of our C-SIP improvement process. And I, I think that we were in the middle school most recently as well as the calendar committee, but we have a lot of good feedback from the middle school in regard to you being very open, being available, asking questions, listening directly. And that was one of the goals that we had, you know, going into this year is how to help you engage with each of our buildings and district-wide. Another governance piece along the ladder is just saying thank you to our staff. We really appreciate the board's support and the, the gift card this year for our staff, for the ham. And I, I think that's a, a great gesture of support and we also extended that to both our bus drivers for Raines and Martin as well as Lockhart. And, you know, we've, we've really, a lot of people are very appreciative of that. And so we thank the board for your leadership in that effort as well as getting involved in some of the things that we're trying to, to work with the district and having good conversations.
And I know I speak for all of us, right? We, coming into your buildings and attending those meetings has, it's just been very high opening for us and we really, really appreciate you welcoming us into your building and getting to engage with your staff. That's something that's new for us and it's, I just feel like it's really making a difference on both sides. So thank you for that.
All right. Moving on to strategic planning, district financial planning.
Chelsea will give kind of the first round of reports and then we come back here in a minute on the other one.
I write for the meeting, I gave you just the revenue summary, expenditure summary. Again, we're coming in at a loss in November. That's normal this time of year, just because it's the end of the year. We did finally, we got our first Polk County revenue for taxes already in December. That's unusual. Usually don't get them until January, so that was good to see that we're getting some of that revenue in, so that will be reflected next month for December. You'll also, I'll talk to you later, I've been really working on just a three-month, three-year, how our revenues and expenditures have came in, how we're kind of proposing and seeing what we may be spending this year compared to the past two years. Also, we've kind of been, we were, went up for RFQs for insurance. We've received three of them today and will probably receive our last one tomorrow.
Any questions?
Oh, just kind of a joke question. Maybe putting a little bit of a rumor to rest. I, I'd heard that you guys weren't going to budget any of the athletic moves next year and they're all going to be specifying their own fundraising for that. So can you put that rumor to rest for us?
That's not true.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to hear that rumor, so. Not going to have your fault.
That's okay.
We can move through MCFAPR update. Most of that'll occur in the action because we've got the C-SIP plan to you. So we're, we are ready to submit. So as far as the MCFAPR update, that's in progress. You have all of the, you know, final documents and then under action items, we'll do the, the official approval and get that submitted. We've got the directions and requirements to submit today. So TC can speak to this better. So there is a Southwest Missouri team. So what happens is, is that every, there's a certain number of, so 520 some odd school districts in Missouri, a certain number of them are year one. And so that those will all be submitted and then DESI will begin that review process of the, the pre-planning as well as the response to standards. And then there'll be certain teams in each region of the state that will meet and review. TC is actually one of the review, now she's not reviewing us, but she will assist in review of another district or two. And so that is when that whole process begins. But really for us, in January is the implementation phase of the good work that our community members and our parents did through the C-SIP and is starting to implement and say, okay, where are we at? Where are we going? What do we need to do? And it's just really putting into work the C-SIP plan and evaluating those strategies and what they mean in each building.
Yes, the piece that just passed out is what will be evaluated on. That is the tool that we'll look through, we'll either meet or not meet. So that's just for your information. Our plan is of course to look at our MCFAP document, fill that out and attach it with page numbers. So the review committee makes, aren't sure they see that it's in there? Because it is.
Year one schools will also have kind of a, I don't know if you want to call it a padded challenge or limit, but they, it will be another year before we get, you know, the official, because we've got, they've got to have a year's worth of data. So we're year one, so there's a lot of things that we will get evaluated on, but there's still a couple of key components that they'll have to wait until after they get that first year of data.
Does it give you a grade period of schools and how?
So the, the, MCFAP is not meant to grade you against other school districts. So it is about what is your growth in your district for your students? And what are your priorities? What are your focus areas? So yes, they will give us, and it's that annual performance report, that, that, which she just handed you out, if you, you know, if there's four points available and you're going to get three out of four. So there'll be a measurement of each district through that process. Some of that will occur, but as far as the TC helped me out, what's the total number of?
Thirty percent.
Yep. Will, will come from that process. And then we have to look at growth of our students and assessment data. We have to look at, you know, I ready, we're allowed to have certain components with us of how we're measuring that and trying to demonstrate all of those pieces of, is Bolivar, where have we been? Where are we at? Where do we want to be? Are we demonstrating growth for students? And is it ongoing, is it each and every year? It's not like the old system basically saying, hey, did this group do better than last group? And it's two years later before you can measure that group against themselves. So the hope is that we do that better than we have in the past. We will see.
Facilities and operations.
So we are kind of slowing down. The winter is hitting, so we're moving different directions on some inside projects. I had mentioned earlier with Making Sparkle, we have some construction work that we're doing hoops. We have most of the pre-demo work already finished. We have a little bit more to do before FEMA starts. We're working on some HVAC things. We are also kind of doing some assessment on what kind of capital projects we need to focus on. We have some energy assessment things going on. We have met with insurance. Mike has been facilitating some discussions with the insurance company on the hail damage. The adjuster came back, spent a good day reevaluating a lot of our hail damage and some of the reports that we have. We'll be bringing back an engineer as well as a roof company doing a reassessment on January 4th. So we hope that we are taking steps forward in that process, working on our insurance claim. So that is one of the larger facilities and operations pieces that is looming for us as we work on. We have Liberator Park that is in progress. We've had, they've started doing some of the grade out and the grade six for the sidewalk as well as the elevations. Most, all of the base rock is in, so we're just kind of trying to work with the weather. We may have a little lapse in some of the progress right now, it's because of the temperatures, but we have, you know, most of the base rock ready to go. Do you have an alternate that I'll be presenting to you on Liberator Park in just a little bit in regard to the road and the drive adjoining, parallel to Hartford? So some good things going there.
Review and discussion, operating budget planning.
Yeah, well, Chelsea's coming up. I just, you have a sheet that has some color coding on it. Draw your attention to that. Just like to point out that this is kind of a, trying to capture some numbers from two, three years ago, bring that together for you so that you, as well as our patrons, and we're going to share this out with our staff. It's a good summary, explanation of where we have, where we are fiscally. And I just appreciate Chelsea's work and being able to kind of host this information for you and have a good conversation, maybe answer some questions about what we're seeing and maybe what some of our needs would be moving forward with this, this discussion. Chelsea, go ahead.
So this is just like the three-year revenue expenditure comparison. And we kind of included some levy options that we potentially have for the district. It'll start at the top with the blue. County revenue will vary each year. However, they always say that you should at least get what you got last year. So we budgeted kind of what we at least got last year, which was $763,000. And then when we come down to the green, you'll see a little bit of difference between 2021 and 2022 school year. We usually personnel costs are around 60 to 75%. In 2020, 21, we had 65.1% of total personnel cost. And then I kind of highlighted the green area because in 21, 22, our personnel cost percentage of total expenditure was 53.8. And the reason is, is because our personnel cost did increase $800,000. However, the overall expenditures for last year was up 6.8 million. And then that was because of the 2013 and 2015 bonds that we refinanced and paid off. And so that increases the total expenditure, which causes that percentage to come down. If we wouldn't have had that cost, our total percent personnel cost would have been 64.4%. So that would have been right in line with what we should have been. And then bringing down to the yellow, the, it highlights the, in 21, 22, the district paid off and refinanced the 2013, 2015 bonds, which increased costs in Fund III by 6.8 million. Without this additional cost, Fund III would have had approximately 2.5 million, which would have fell right in there as well, what we normally spend or around there. And that would just kind of, without that cost, we wouldn't have had such a drastic change in our expenditures. And then you bring it down to the kind of reddish-orange. It will kind of summarize the percentage of total budget spent each year. And in 2020, 21, 22, we spent over 100, it was 116% of our budget. And that is because of that 6.8 million that we spent. Without that, we wouldn't have, we actually would have been under at 97%. And then also highlighting in 2022, 2023, we're expected to spend about 108% of our budget. And that is due to expenses that we didn't budget for, like career ladder. That's 200 and around 230,000 we didn't budget for. We didn't budget for the deductible for the roof, which is 150,000. And then any of the cost of capital expenditures for FEMA, Little Liberator Park, those things coming in higher than what we expected. And then as you go below that, the current assess, assess valuation for this year is 218,000, or sorry, 218,686,898. And our current operating levy is 3.0651. Last year it was 3.04. The total overall, our levy is 3.82 and the state average is 4.14. So we are about 32, 33 cents below that. If you look below that, I gave a little just explanation of what additional funds we could get if we added .15 or 20 cents or 25 cents for each school year. Just kind of gives us an overall average. So like this year, if we would have went up 15 cents, we would have had an additional $328,000 to go towards these additional expenditures. If we go as far out as 25 cents, we would have had an additional $546,000 that would have helped cover those expenditures that we didn't plan for.
So what we'd like to do is bring you some, so we have until, well, after the midpoint of January to approve a resolution for a valid measure for April in regard to an operating piece. We'd like to also bring you back some information about, we've shared with you a Bolivar versus a cohort group, so a variety of school districts. Willard, Logan-Rogeville, Nix, Ozark, Branson, Carl Jumpshin, the Ocho, Lebanon. So we've tried to find a cohort of school districts that, and where their operating levy is in comparison to where we are. What we're finding is that Bolivar, as far as the operating, is ranks in the, in the lower, if you would, if there's 25 schools in that demographic, we're in the lower eight to nine school districts. So it becomes also one of those competitive things where you say, okay, how do, how do we compete? Right now, what we're really seeing is the need to compete for salaries and benefits of staff, teachers as well as our classified staff. So what we would like you to consider is the financial impacts of, of what we see our, our budget trends are and the opportunity that a 15, 20, or 25 cent operating levy proposition to our voters would, would be considered. And what that allows us to do in, in really recruiting and retaining high-quality staff, both in our teachers as well as our food service, custodial, paras. We believe that that is a trend that we're going to need to, to at least discuss. Now, we believe that the April ballot, that's the earliest that we could do that. So that at least allows us to at least measure and communicate to our community what the needs are in the, the operating piece. We have been talking in, in capital discussions about what that looks like in 2024 with a, a no-tax issue, bond issue, just with facilities. One of the challenges that we have is, is that we may have eight to 10 million dollars worth of bonding capacity in 2024. And that potentially could be provided to voters, a no-tax increase on the, on the capital part of it, which is great, but we can't continue to build onto the footprint of Bolivar School District without some plan to how we're going to operate that. Now, we have to operate it both with paying the electric bill, heating bill, we got, you know, the water, the sewer, those type of things. But we also potentially have to have people to clean it and facilitate operating it, those type of things. So for instance, we, we have the middle school, it's a great addition, but we, we're paying for the facility, the rooms, but we, we now have people filling those rooms. And so we have to have someone to clean those rooms. And it increased our electric footprint, it increased our heating footprint. So those are all things that as we talk about, yes, we would like, you know, XYZ facility. I'm all for it. But we, we, just like our home budget, we have to be able to say, okay, if I, if I add that, I'm going to have more insurance costs, I'm going to have more operating costs. We just need to make sure that we don't overextend ourselves in just building things without the capacity to say, okay, now can we operate it? Can we pay the insurance on it and can we maintain it? Because these aren't just five-year investments. These are facilities that we hope to last us for 20, 30, 50 years. So it's kind of a balance in allowing our patrons and our taxpayers, one, to know that we should feel confident that Bolivar School Board is good, good stewards of tax dollars. But we also have to clearly demonstrate to our, our taxpayers that what we're going to do with those funds. And in this case, I, I also think it's going to be very helpful to our staff, certified and classified, to understand that we're talking about dollars that would go directly to payroll and benefits so that we can retain and recruit and stay, stay competitive. We, we want Bolivar to be, you know, we have great neighbors, but we really want Bolivar to be the place that people want to come and work and in order- And in order to do that, we have to be very competitive with how we're paying and the benefits that we offer to those employees. Please look that over. We'll be coming back to you with the revenue discussion. We'll send this out. Really, Chelsea, thank you for putting this together.
Yes. Do you have any questions on it? I did have one question. So you said the state or the, what was the 3.82? Is that the state average?
So the state average is like, as of last year, the report cards came out and the state average was 4.14, and we are at 3.82.
Okay, that's what we're at.
Yep.
Okay.
For this year.
Thank you so much.
With operating and debt service.
I just think it says a lot about a board, and I hope the decisions proceeding by the folks who work in the school district, that our board is committed to our quality faculty exam. Number one is the people who teach our students. And so I really hope that they hear that law is clear and help us see our dedication to want to make sure that they are thankful for making it so clear and being able to demonstrate to people why this is important.
Thank you.
That process is in progress. We hope to be able to have you a calendar recommendation at the January board meeting. We really made some good work yesterday. So I think what we'll do is, the feedback I've gotten is we hit all of the edits. So we have basically an option A and a B out for review. We'll send those out for review tomorrow to all staff as part of the district update. I think when we get back in January, we will do a quick survey on A and B, and we should have our recommendation for you by the January board meeting.
This is not necessarily calendar review, but it's calendar-related. Do we, do we know any more about graduation location and confirmations of those measures?
Jason, who can you help me out on that?
Yeah. We've not got a contract. I don't know why. I've been working with SBU since about September. We have got a guarantee that we can have the facility on that date. So I did get them to guarantee that, so we're not going to be without a place. But we've not seen a contract yet. I would expect that 100% by the January board meeting. So, but that's where we're at. So we are guaranteed, because I asked him if they're working through that. I said, can you at least please tell me or get us on the calendar pending assigned contract? So we do have that guarantee, just waiting on the contract.
When is that, Jason?
21st?
Sunday, the 21st. I think it could be, give me just a second and I'll give it to you. May 21st, yes.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Calendar hopefully to us at the January board meeting.
Yes.
Liberator Park and FEMA project change order review, 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Yeah, so I'd like, there's actually, we have two requests here for you. So let me start with Liberator Park. So Liberator Park, the parking lot project is in progress. We requested will be considered change order number one. And we've been working upon some cost options for this particular change order. So the future plans at Liberator Park have the north parking lot, but it would also have a drive that would run north and south, parallel to Hartford, that would be available for bus let-off, those type of things. So we have most all of the equipment there. We looked at what our options would be to go for that particular drive. It is $134,034. But what this does is it does allow us to go ahead and capture that now. The costs are going to be as, as low as they're going to be. It also allows us then to start using that for current needs. So for instance, when buses come over to the intermediate, there's a lineup process that they do, we can go ahead and start using that. So they'd be able to come off of Hartford, stage on this road, and then go right into the, the drive. So it gives us some options there. It'll give us some options with future football practice. It gives us options with track. Also gives us some options if we were to, and I'm not mandating anybody to have cross-country over there, but I think some plans would be to have cross-country over there. We would also be able to use it there so we could, you know, stage classes, those types of things. If you think about soccer, soccer games, soccer tournaments, we'll be able to use the north parking lot for soccer games, as well as this would allow us some bus options. So there's a lot of value to going ahead and put that in. I also think that, back to capital project, this does demonstrate to a lot of people that are wondering what, what the board's doing, that we are taking steps towards making Liberator Park a reality. We're doing that in an economical way. We're trying to manage that in small stages, but it does allow us to capture some kind of priority needs. And then we'll start focusing on that restroom facility as well. So I'd recommend, so it'd be Liberator Park change order one, the amount of 134,034. I'd recommend that change order approval. I don't think you have that one.
So you need us to make a motion and vote?
You would, yes.
Okay. Do you want to have a motion to approve change order number one for Liberator Park? Ask for it. All those in favor?
So even though we haven't started the FEMA project, there, there are already some change orders that have come in. So when we were in the design and engineering phase on the FEMA building, the city of Bolivar had not yet transitioned some things over to Liberty. So there was some communication that wasn't occurring. And so we have since been given some new expectations on how certain things have to be installed on the FEMA building, all the way from conduit to certain, the power panel, those type of things. So there are four change orders that are resulting in adjustments in pricing. And I will grab those, I need to go over those with you. We went back from the original change order request. We worked with Paragon in regard to, would all of that need to be necessary? Is there adjustments? Do we have options within that? So we've also gone back and said, okay, instead of there being 300 feet, do we, can we adjust that to 200 feet or 100 feet by making a couple other adjustments? So we're working on that. There's also some things where we're looking at, because of the building construction, it's pre-cast concrete walls. It's not like, you know, a three-inch, a 254 wall. These are very thick. A lot of times, there's conduit already based in the walls, and so that has to be done all before it's poured. And then there's an option to say, okay, we're not going to worry about that. We'll just install the conduit after the fact. And there's a value, a savings. So the CO1 is really utility and security rough-in. That original amount, based on some of the Liberty adjustments that were requested in regard to conduit, was $29,790. Based on some value engineering and some adjustments that we've been working on, we have that down to $18,296. So we would be recommending that adjustment. Need to, I'm gonna skip over change order two for just a second. Change order four is in regard to a material change. It's also in regard to the electric panel, the service, and some of the requirements that Liberty now is in place versus when the city had it. That's $3,732 adjustment. And then the other adjustment is $1,071, change order number five. Now, change order number two, when the building was designed, we, it's a, it's a lot of concrete. So you have to understand that this is not just typical construction. So what you would normally do is delay installing any type of sport floor. It would just be concrete. So we wouldn't be going in there and putting a wood basketball floor because of the amount of moisture that has to cure out at some point. So what was supposed to occur is there's supposed to be a slab recession, a two-inch slab recession in the design plans that would accommodate that six months, a year later, we would come back and then we would install a wood floor. That was omitted in that design piece, even though we discussed it with the board, we discussed it in the process. That original cost adjustment was going to cost us $9,467. That's for rebar, it's also for some design changes. We got that down to $2,714, and we have that. That is the, the amount now that's the new amount. I had met with the board leadership earlier this week on that one, that there is a possibility that we would not be asking you to approve that until we got clarity on what that is. Based on what we have now and the dollars that we are at, I can recommend that one. So at this point, we have CO1, which is for the rough-in and utility, it's $18,296. CO2 is now for $2,714. CO4 is for $3,732. CO5 is $1,071. If anybody's wondering why there's not a CO3, you had already approved that, and that was the soundproofing, the lapidary panels. That was in the base bid alternate that we already knew about. So that's why there's no, we skipped over three. We already approved that one. So I, I would recommend these. I think that Paragon's done a very good job of assisting the district in looking at some of these adjustments. Some of these are, are not choices. We wish we would have known about these on the front side, but that, that was when Bolivar was transitioning, and some things just didn't get into the review mix like it should have.
Do you have any other questions about those change orders? Motion to approve the change orders as presented?
Hold on a second.
All those in favor? Any other non-action items?
Yeah, I've been working on the MSBA policy updates. I'd like to ask that we table those, and we'll bring those back to you in January so we can complete the review. We still have a few of those that we need to, just seek some clarification on if the board is acceptable with that. Annually, we, Dr. Wall presented, we provide you the assessment plan. It's been on the agenda in the past, and so we would recommend approval of the assessment plan.
Motion for second? Any questions? All those in favor?
We have a speaker coming this spring for trauma-informed, Josh Barner. So we would recommend partnering with him to provide us some trauma-informed instruction, so professional learning.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Several years ago, the district entered into an agreement with BEAF, our Bolivar Education Advancement Fund. We, they purchased a home where we now house Little Liberator. That adjoins the BES and BIS campus. When we entered into that lease, we took an option to own or to purchase. We have been meeting with BEAF in regard to some insurance so we're not double-covered. And so some options came up about that. And it's really in the district's best interest at this point to go ahead and own that facility. So we would be recommending the purchase of the BEAF property where we house Little Liberator, and I'd like to recommend the purchase of that property. What is that price? That price, and we, we're waiting for that final, is about $78,000. The original price was 90, but BEAF did give us credit on what we've been paying each month as part of the purchase price. So it's, it's still a pretty significant savings to us on that. I need to get with BEAF. I, I may perhaps need some clarification on the exact payoff. And that's just because of the way that BEAF financed it themselves. So the way that the agreement reads for me is that, you know, the full amount that we're applying, but in the end, BEAF supports us in a lot of efforts. So the, the school benefited from that in the beginning. And so this is an opportunity for us to invest back in BEAF, which they put right back into our classrooms. So it's really just a semantical thing in regard to making sure that we follow the language of the lease.
Can you repeat that amount again?
And depending on when we get the payoff amount, we, we will still owe them this month's payment so it can adjust plus or minus $700 there, just depending on our timing.
Great. Motion to approve the BEAF property purchase as presented? All those in favor?
So we are in that approval process. There are a lot of people to thank, but I really would like to start off with Dr. Wall and Dr. Darby. And then from there, we go to our building model leadership, administrators. Then we, we have teachers, we have students, we have parents and community members. We started that process back last May and June, implementing some, you know, what, where have we been? Where are we, where are we at? Where are we going? But there is a number of people that really touched this document in a lot of positive ways to help us. One, to find a Bolivar comprehensive school improvement plan that is Bolivar's. It's, it's goals and things that we value as a community and as teachers. And we believe that this will be what will help Bolivar students be strategically positioned for, for future success, whether that be right into career, post-secondary, trade school, wherever it is, this is what we want Bolivar to be very focused on. So really, we need to first start off before reading recommendations with a lot of thank yous to a lot of people that have helped us with that. We've even been talking about scheduling a little, you know, post-approval dinner as we submit this and, you know, get some people back in and just, just saying thank you for all the work we did there. But with that, Dr. Wall, do we have any other things other than recommending the approval of the C-SIP and the pre-planning response to standards?
She's speechless for once. Back, back to quick.
All right. All those in favor? No public comments? Thank you, guys. It can snow sometime after Christmas?
Yeah. Anytime after Tuesday at 4:30 PM.
No, I'm only, like, after Christmas. My kids can come home. Um, all right. Do you have a motion to recess and close session?